Everybody put the seatbelt on. Ready?
Yeah.
Ready? This meeting is called to order. The invocation is going to be given by Reverend David Haley, Associate Pastor at Rightsful United Methodist Church, and this is his second time in the last two months. And we appreciate it.
Gracious God, thank you for the gift of this day. We're grateful to live and work in this beautiful corner of our state. Lord, you're the source of all wisdom, and you've promised wisdom and guidance for all who ask. And so we pray today that you will grant your wisdom to these community leaders as they consider matters that impact our community. Help us to always be mindful of the most vulnerable among us in our community. Help us always to be thankful for our many blessings. These things we pray. Amen.
Amen. The pledge allegiance is going to be given by Ms. Stephanie Walker.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair Pierce is unable to attend today's meeting, therefore the board members present need to excuse her from today's meeting. Is there a motion and a second to excuse?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse. Okay, next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Boy, if it keeps going like this, we're gonna be in good shape. Number 10, second reading amendments on chapter five of animals, articles, and updates.
My understanding is that we've got to bring that back around to the next meeting, Mr. Chair. Just on there for informational purposes.
It'll be made as the return of a consideration as the next regularly scheduled meeting on May the 19th. So after that, we are going to do some fun stuff. We have consideration of the Novant STEM Partnership sponsorship of Cape Fear Museum's Science Matters Gallery.
Yes, hello there. Hello, good afternoon. It's Kate Ballion from Cape Fear Museum, and I just want to say we are so excited to have Novant Health as a partner for the Science Matters exhibit at the new Cape Fear Museum in Grace District. Their commitment of 200,000 for a 10-year inaugural sponsorship will support in hard science programs and technologies at the new museum. We expect to showcase innovations in healthcare within the gallery space and help foster public interest in innovations occurring within our community and further the education-to-career pipeline, keeping and attracting a talent to our region. I'm here with Amy Akers, Chief Nursing Officer from Novant Health, who is also on our associates' board, and Victoria Bellamy and Shelby Lloyd, who are with Novant Health and serve in community engagement.
Just like to say, I'm Victoria Bellamy, Community Engagement Manager with Novant Health, and we are just really excited to partner with the Cape Fear Museum on the Project Grace Initiative. We know that the health of our communities goes beyond the walls of our hospitals, so this is really important to us, and we just can't wait to see it all come to life and just to be part of it, and just really excited to be here today to represent Novant Health.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
Great job, she did perfect.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for your sponsorship.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We do need to...
I'm sorry?
Can you jump over this aisle?
I was just asking for a motion to... Is there a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 12 is another fun one. Consideration of Greater Women's in Sports Hall of Fame proclamation. Who's reading that? Me? How about that? Okay.
Ah, there she is.
Whereas the Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame was founded in 2005 by the award-winning Atlantic Coast Conference ACC head football coach, Bill Dooley, to recognize individuals who have made a significant impact on sports in the Greater Wilmington area. And whereas the Hall of Fame is sustained by the dedicated service of its volunteer board directors and the generous support of local sponsors and community members. And whereas the Hall of Fame strengthens the community by celebrating those who have influenced the sports world and by promoting sponsorship, excellence, hard work, teamwork, and leadership through its events, scholarships, and outreach. And whereas the Hall of Fame administers the Bill Dooley Scholarship Program, which annually awards scholarships to high school student athletes selected by the year's inductees who demonstrate excellence in academics, athletics, and citizenship, helping to cultivate the next generation of leaders. And whereas since its inaugural class in 2006, the Hall of Fame has celebrated up to five individuals each year, preserving our community's rich athletic history, and will culminate the 2005 Legends Induction Banquet on Sunday, May the 18th, where the following individuals will be honored for their outstanding contributions to sports. First, Scott Braswell, a transformative high school football coach and athletic director with 28-year career that included a 2007 state championship and 12 conference titles at Harvard High School. The stadium now bears his name and recognition of his lasting impact on students in the community. Second, Kimberly Crabbe, a trailblazing force in women's soccer, the first African-American woman called up to the U.S. Women's National Team, advancing the sport through national championship level play and youth development. Third, Tommy Craig, a Wilmington native and athletic trainer whose 25-year tenure with the Toronto Blue Jays included two World Series titles, leadership in maintaining the league's lowest injury rate, and ongoing service with the NFL, USTA, and international sports organizations. Number four, Dr. David Miller, an accomplished athlete and educator whose All-American collegiate baseball career led to a 40-year tenure at UNCW, shaping both athletic, academic, and mentoring programs at the university. And Coach Jerry Wainwright, an distinguished collegiate basketball coach who led UNCW to his first NCAA tournament win, multiple conference titles, and extended his legacy through national coaching and leadership with USA Basketball. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that New Hanover County Board of Commissioners recognizes May the 12th through May the 18th, 2025, as Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame Week in New Hanover County, honoring the achievements of these inspiring individuals and the Hall of Fame's ongoing commitment to celebrating athletic excellence and fostering community pride. Adopted this fifth day of May, 2025, by William E. Rivenbar. And Ms. McCall.
Yes, sir. Thank you for doing that. I would like to call Gina DeTico and Sheila Bowles Ford. They're both on the board, and believe me, at a board meeting, they're not quiet or shy. So, and Joe Brown...
Well, she might be the only one in here that's got a basketball gym named after her, too.
No, they both are on the board, and Joe Browning was inducted into the Hall of Fame last year, and Sheila is already in the Hall of Fame. We've awarded over 64 scholarships to students over the past years for the Sports Hall of Fame. This year, we have approximately 500 people coming to the banquet. It's sold out. So golf is sold out. Every year, this gets larger. We have approximately 70 people on the list to still be considered to be inducted and still get nominees. So we appreciate this and the recognition that y'all are doing to the Sports Hall of Fame. As you know, Bill, we have a lot of athletes from this region. So thank you on behalf of the Sports Hall of Fame Board of Directors for what y'all do and supporting us.
Y'all come over and get a picture.
Mr. Chair, I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Right here, on three. One, two, three. Okay. One, two.
Hang on, Alex, I'll give it to her.
Bravo. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Consideration of Safe Boating Week proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that we'll get a presentation from David Parker. Some other individuals, I think, have a sign or two here in the crowd. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then invite you to make some comments, sir. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners' Safe Boating Week proclamation. Whereas 2025 marks the 68th Annual Observance of National Safe Boating Week, a nationwide campaign dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of safe boating practices and preventing loss of life on the water. Whereas North Carolina features more than 5,000 miles of scenic shoreline and is home to over 361,000 registered boaters who enjoy access to rivers, lakes, and coastal waters. And whereas boating and fishing remain among the most popular year-round recreational activities in the state. And whereas an average of 630 lives are lost each year in the United States due to boating-related accidents, and approximately 80% of those deaths result from drowning. And whereas in nearly 86% of the drowning cases, an individual was not wearing a life jacket, highlighting the critical role of life jackets in preventing tragedy. And whereas wearing a properly fitted life jacket is the most effective and reliable safety measure boaters can take to protect themselves while on the water. And whereas New Hanover County's strategic plan includes a commitment to community safety and well-being by calling on the county to effectively and efficiently respond to public health and safety demands. And whereas the National Safe Boating Council, in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and other national organizations, has designated May 17th through May 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week to reinforce the message of prevention through education and preparedness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, that May 17th through the 23rd, 2025, is recognized as Safe Boating Week in New Hanover County and marks the beginning of a year-round commitment to water safety. All people are urged to wear a life jacket at all times while boating and to take action that supports a culture of awareness and responsibility on our waterways. Adopted the fifth day of May, 2025, by our Chairman, William E. Rivenbar. Sir, would you like to make some remarks, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners, my name is David Parker. I'm the Safety Officer of the local chapter of the U.S. Power Squadron. We are an organization that's been around for 80 years. We're dedicated to boating safety and education. And I'm here to speak about boating safety, to honor Safe Boating Week. I want to start out by thanking you, thanking this board, not just for your consideration of our proclamation this year, but for giving us this bully pulpit to talk from, and also really for all the solid years of support you've put behind our programs. We know we have friends here, and we're very grateful for it, and so we thank you very sincerely. My remarks about boating safety, there's good news and there's bad news. The good news is that the sport of boating right now is safer than it's ever been. If you consider taking into account the number of people that get out on the water during the season, we have fewer accidents and fewer deaths every year. And the programs that have been put into effect over the years have largely succeeded in eliminating a lot of the risks that used to take lives. I can remember when I was growing up, I was on the rescue squad in my hometown, which is on a river, and every year, we had people die from accidents that you never see anymore. There really has been progress made. About the only way now that people lose their lives in any significant numbers in boating is drowning. And we know that the way to prevent drowning is this thing right here. This is a life jacket. If you have on a life jacket, it's very difficult to die from drowning. And this brings me to the bad news. The bad news is that Americans have proven that they will not wear this thing here on a dock-to-dock basis, which is what you have to do for it to be effective. It's like seatbelts in your car. You can't wait until there's trouble to put it on. And Americans won't wear this thing. We've been flogging this for 80 years, and I finally had an epiphany a couple of years ago. I was pulling away from the dock in my own boat, and I realized I wasn't wearing a life jacket. And I realized I wasn't going to put one on either. I wasn't going to wear it. And so, folks, we need to stop. We need to stop beating the dead horse. We need to go to Plan B. And I am wearing Plan B right here. That's what I'm here to talk about. This is an automatic inflating life vest. If I fall in the water, this will blow itself up until it looks kind of like this. This will float me just fine. It'll float just as well as this will. And you can probably see, this is not bulky. It's not hot to wear. I've been wearing this for about 45 minutes here. It's perfectly comfortable. So we need to promote this item here and stop trying to worry about this thing here. And I'm urging everybody, all the boaters in this room, which is probably at least three-quarters of the folks here, to buy these self-inflatable life jackets, wear these, and have them onboard for your guests.
Can you buy them at most any boat store?
Just about any boat store. They're around $50. And when you use them, you can buy a little refill kit that'll re-up this thing where it's as good as new, once it's self-inflated. So that's my pitch tonight. I thank you again for your support, and we appreciate it.
We thank you.
Thank you for your remarks, sir. Mr. Chair, I move the proclamation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a photo.
We got one more fun thing to do tonight. Consideration of approval of the purchase of the Flossy Bryan property. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
Yahoo.
Got a few comments.
Yeah.
I'll be quick. Inciting item for y'all to consider. The county is currently the two-thirds owner of an undeveloped 60-acre land tract located at 3990 Independence Boulevard. Today's agenda item is to consider the purchase of the other one-third interest of the property. The county's ownership arose from the estate of Wilmington resident Flossy Bryan, who passed away in 2003. Heirs of Ms. Bryan own the other one-third undivided interest in the land. Since Ms. Bryan's death, matters related to the will were litigated in court for many years. In 2022, a court ordered a local attorney, Jerry Mannan, to sell the entire parcel of land and distribute the proceeds according to the proportionate ownership of the property. In early 2025, county staff learned that a possible purchaser of the property had declined a new forward on the purchase. Staff recognized that preserving natural areas is an identified objective of the county's recently adopted strategic plan, as well as the expressed desire of board members with this particular property having been specifically mentioned as potential acquisition in order to preserve green space. Accordingly, a purchase contract for the property was drafted and advanced for the possible purchase of the property by the county with minimal financial commitment, if the board was ultimately not in favor. The proposed gross purchase price of the property is $11.6 million, which was derived from referencing the tax value of the property and also an appraisal. This price has been accepted by Mr. Mannan. After factoring in the county's two-thirds existing ownership, the net cost of the county is $3,866,067, which will be distributed among Ms. Bryan's heirs by Mr. Mannan. Staff recommends that the purchase price be funded by the county's Revenue Stabilization Fund, with a stated intent to repay that fund over a 10-year period from the General Fund of the County in annual payments of $463,925.49. This payment incorporates an interest rate of 4.08%, which is an approximation of the county's current borrowing rate. After the preliminary offer was accepted, the county engaged a firm to do standard environmental due diligence on the property. The diligence did note one finding that I just wanted to discuss briefly, a finding related to chemical spills that occurred during the 1980s related to an HVAC company, with that property being monitored by the NCDQ. The primary impact of this matter on our property is if the county were to decide to develop the property with enclosed buildings or install drinking wells, additional evaluation may be warranted. The report also noted that there's household debris on the property, that there is the potential for regulated streams and wetlands on the property we should be mindful of. After considering the county's offer, after accepting the county's offer, Mr. Manning initiated a 10-day upset process, which has now expired without any competing offers. The sale must still be confirmed by the court, which we expect to occur in the near future. If the board approves the item today, we would expect closing soon after the sale is confirmed by the court. Because the recommended funding source is Corpus from the Revenue Stabilization Fund, four votes are needed for this item to be approved as presented. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank you, Eric, for that rundown. This is a really terrific day for New Hanover County, and I want to thank the public for their patience in this. This is a wonderful example in my mind of the public reaching out, this commission listening carefully to what needed to be done and taking the appropriate steps with our staff, working in all ways to make sure it happened. And I know there was some frustration from the public saying, oh my gosh, nothing's happening. What is happening? And I know myself and other commissioners said quietly, please, we hear you. Let us do the work to make it happen. And some results what you just heard here. I know we have one technicality step to go forward with it through the courts, but we've been assured that that will happen. This is really wonderful to save this amount of space in really in midtown here for my grandchildren and my grandchildren's grandchildren to be able to enjoy just the way that Flossy Bryan noted when she turned it over. This is a really good day for the citizens of New Hanover County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, very briefly, I just want to thank all of the various community members who have been involved in this process in encouraging and identifying this property as one worthy of conservation. It is a great testament to your advocacy that we are here today, and I am grateful to you. I know that we all are. This is one of those circumstances and times in which the five of us were ultimately able to all see the value and come together in a really big and important way. And as Commissioner Zappel so eloquently stated, this really is for the future, the children of today and the children of all time. I want to also thank the Bryan family because, as perhaps you are aware, the land was originally given to New Hanover County with the express intent to be preserved in perpetuity. And it was because of the court proceeding that that seemed like it might not be a possibility. But through the ingenuity of our staff and the political will of the five commissioners that are before you today, we are going to see this through. I understand that there may be a family member of the Bryans who's here today. Would you please stand up? Please applaud these folks. Your family's gift to New Hanover County, to my children, and to all future children and present children will never be forgotten. It is my hope that we will be diligent in our cultivation of this green space. I believe that we will, and I hope that we will find some appropriate way to honor the legacy of your family in the naming of this parcel as we move forward. Thank you again.
I'm going to go ahead and go. Everything everyone said, of course, I won't repeat it, but I will just say, I have a little bit of experience, not necessarily, well, this is a new experience for me, and I'm very excited about it, but I had a cousin do the same in Ori County, give over 100 tracts of land for people. There is nothing that is so gracious as doing something like that, something of that value. And for her to have the vision to do that, we will be forever grateful. And I hope to really, if we can steward this through all of us, and enact the vision that she had for maybe agriculture and education, I'm super excited about that. I feel like we've had some presentations already, and I am excited to see what it becomes. And I hope everybody stays with us along the process. We're excited for it. So thank you very much to your family member, and we'll be forever grateful. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Yes, now there's two. There's two.
A second.
Well, I'll... Is approved. First is Bryan property on the terms described in the summary in adopted amendment.
Can we bundle the motions?
Yes, sir.
If that's appropriate, then I'll make a motion. We bundle the two motions for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming. We don't get that a lot. We don't.
You're right, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next is a rezoning request, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant on behalf of Terry Dean, Rita English, Justin Slack, and Martin Polak. Property enters to rezone two parcels totaling approximately 1.94 acres located at 1609 and 1617 Little Sound Loop Road from R20 S Residential Direct to a general use of R20 Residential District. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant, and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Now, all of the opponents, ever how many there are, that's 15 minutes altogether. So if somebody gets up and speaks for 14, the other, ever how many don't get but one minute. So the staff will give their presentation. Now, welcome.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the board. This application is a request to rezone approximately 1.94 acres from an R20 S Residential District to an R20 Residential District. This is a straight reason... This is a straight rezoning, and as a reminder, there is no concept plan and no conditions can be added to this request. The properties are located on Middle Sound Loop Road between Mason Landing Road and Mark Twain Drive. While these lots were originally zoned R twenty in nineteen seventy, they were rezoned to R twenty S in nineteen eighty-eight at the request of Middle Sound Loop residents to limit density. The site is bordered by R fifteen zoning to the north, south, and west, and R twenty S to the east. From the aerial photography, we can see the existing single-family home currently standing at sixteen oh nine Middle Sound Loop Road and the vacant lot at sixteen seventeen Middle Sound Loop Road. Here is a photo of each property depicting the existing site conditions. The dimensional standards are the same for the R twenty S and R twenty zoning districts. However, R twenty allows accessory dwelling units, mobile homes, and performance residential developments, whereas R twenty S does not. Since this is a straight rezoning and there is no site plan required, I created a visual depicting what these lots could look like with ADUs in R twenty. R twenty S could accommodate a maximum of four single-family dwellings, in contrast with the R twenty district, which could accommodate four single-family dwellings and four ADUs for a total of eight dwellings. Please note, this is just a staff visual and not a concept plan from the applicant. Any development would have to adhere to the standards set in the U D O, including lot sizes, setbacks, and standards for ADUs. The total gross floor area of ADUs shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet, and there is a limit of one ADU per lot. The ADU must be located in the rear yard completely behind the front facade of this principal structure unless constructed over a detached garage. Here is an example of a home in an R twenty S district. Here is a home, here's an example of a home in an R twenty district. There are no state transportation improvement projects along this section of Middle Sound Loop Road. Both properties have direct full access onto Middle Sound Loop Road. Traffic to impact analyses are not required for straight rezonings. There could be a small increase in traffic generated by the proposed rezoning. The proposed development could cause a minimal increase in student generation to the relevant school districts. This rezoning could allow for a transition of development from R fifteen to R twenty S in an area where there is already a mix of R fifteen, R twenty, and R twenty S. R twenty S was designed to keep density low to protect environmentally sensitive areas. Due to the availability of public and private utilities, these sites are unlikely to be developed with private wells and septic systems. This project would help achieve the county's goal of increasing the housing supply to a level of one residential unit per every two residents. The comprehensive plan designates this property as part of the general residential place type, which focuses on lower-density housing and associated civic and commercial services. The proposed maximum development would still fall within the desired density of the place type while accommodating for the continued growth of New Hanover County. The planning board considered this item at their April third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting and voted five to one to recommend approval, finding it consistent with the comprehensive plan because the proposed district would still align with the desired density of the place type while accommodating for the continued growth of New Hanover County. The board also found recommending approval was reasonable and in the public interest because the rezoning would benefit the community by providing more housing options. Staff's recommendation is based on policy guidance of the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation. Staff have received additional public comments, which were provided to the board earlier today. This concludes my presentation. Caitlin Surza with the W M P O and Tim Lowe with County Engineering are here to answer any further questions. The applicant is here and is also prepared a presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions for Ryan, but if it's appropriate, I'd like to pose a question to Mr. Hip, who I believe is here on behalf of the planning board tonight. Mr. Hip, would you, thank you very much, sir, would you please give a brief overview of the board's discussion as well as the reason behind your dissent or reasons behind your dissent?
And the majority of the board felt that the proposed rezoning did not significantly change the use of the property. The applicant had made mention of desiring ADUs, and their ADUs not being allowed in the twenty S, but allowed in twenty R, or excuse me, R twenty, that was their intent. So that, the majority of the board felt comfortable with that. My dissent related specifically to the fact that an application for straight rezoning does not require a specific development plan for review. And my personal feeling as a citizen and as a member of the board is that there's just too few, too few parcels in New Hanover County for us not to know what the intent of redevelopment is. The neighbors have been there for quite some time, and I feel it's on the developer to provide some specific information about what they intend to do with the property. And then again, another concern I had was the R twenty S. The S designation, as referred to, had to do with the sensitivity to the environmental conditions around that particular parcel. So that was, that was my dissent. But in general, the majority did feel that the change was not terribly significant.
Noted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ryan, before we lose you, did I read this right? I'd like to compliment you on the use of the word whilst. We rarely see that in commentary.
What is it? I appreciate that.
Whilst, or whilst, W H I L S T, that was added in there. And I know it also, this is your first time in front of the board, am I right?
It is, indeed.
It is. Well, you know, welcome to the esteemed bench.
Thank you.
And we're delighted to have you here, and keep those words coming.
I appreciate it. Delighted to be here.
Yeah, okay. Good. That's all I had at the moment.
Cindy Wolf.
Good afternoon. No, excuse me. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of these parcels. As Ryan pointed out, they're two individual parcels as part of this zoning petition. My clients are actually the owners of sixteen seventeen Middle Sound Loop Road. However, I believe that it made sense to include both of these parcels in the rezoning petition rather than leaving a fragment of a zoning district between the church and the R fifteen district that overlays Treasure Cove. Terry and Rita English accepted my client's offer to include them, and they just joined into the request. I just say that to reinforce that there are two individual properties with no intent to combine them. You heard Ryan's description of the R twenty district, and essentially, it is the same as the R twenty S, except that you can do performance residential in the R twenty, and I think that's an important aspect, and that was how developments like Treasure Cove were in fact developed. That being said, you can also see that there have been several rezonings within that original R twenty S that was created back in the eighties. Mason Harbor, Loblawli Landing, Winds Harbor, they have also preserved the single-family housing that was desired in the R twenty and the R twenty S, although some, a couple of them are R fifteen, the one is just straight R twenty. But they were maximized in density with that performance provision. He also pointed out that both of those districts have the same size regulations as far as setbacks, size and width of lots, but that the accessory dwelling unit is not a permitted use. Certainly, accessory dwellings can provide flexibility in housing and can make sense for both financial and lifestyle reasons. An ADU cannot be bought or sold separately. It's just a factor of an extra bedroom or bedrooms as part of a single-family home. We're all painfully aware of the local housing deficit and issues of housing affordability. Whether the owner's purpose of an ADU anywhere in the county now in those other districts is to house a relative or even to gain rent to offset mortgage, permitting an ADU is an option for conventional single-family construction can address one or even both of those issues. My clients are subdivide, intend to subdivide sixteen seventeen into two twenty thousand square foot plus lots. That's permitted today. They could have already done that, they're just pending the outcome of this decision. But at least one of them would desire to put in an accessory dwelling. Sixteen oh nine is an existing house. The Englishes live across the street and rent it to their son, who is a traveling welder. A question was raised as to the RV trailer that is sometimes in their driveway. He takes that around the country with job sites and went home, obviously has the occasion to open it up for clearing and cleaning and airing out. They are certainly aware that it cannot be occupied now or even if this zoning is passed, it would not qualify as an accessory dwelling. In my conversations with Rita English, they have no plan to do anything with the track, divide it or add an accessory dwelling. Their intent is to turn it down to their son upon inheritance. Some opposition has been sent over. Certainly, one of them, it's interesting to me that three of the senders of the opposition are actually owners from those performance developments that were maximized with greater density than what this will be. Please keep in mind that what we're talking about, that's all right, what we're talking about is the possibility of a maximum of four accessory dwellings if all three of those owners were to decide to opt for it. All the lots in this surrounding area, the R fifteen, R fifteen behind, R fifteen across the street, they all have the ability to put accessory dwellings on their lots right now. So we believe that with these lots sandwiched in between the church and the R fifteen development, this is really just an issue of equity and fairness in their housing rights. What I wanted to point out here was top of drainage and issues like that, we're not in a floodplain. The ground elevation on these lots is a good four to six feet above the, well, in fact, even more than that, almost six, eight to ten feet above the ground elevation of the closest floodplain. So with that, with, as far as Mr. Hip's comments, you know, ninety-nine percent of what I bring you is a conditional rezoning. This is a, two single lots of record that can be divided into two lots apiece now if they wanted to. This is purely about the ability of accessory dwellings, which we think are a valuable housing asset opportunity around our county, and that's why I believe that we adopted it into the ordinance. I appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval. We certainly do believe that it's consistent and in the public interest, and the same with the planning board. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cindy, welcome back. Can we talk about the ADUs? If we go to an R twenty, that will allow the limitation of bedrooms in the ADUs to be lifted. Am I correct?
No, it just allows the ability for an ADU of a maximum of twelve thousand, twelve hundred, twelve hundred square feet.
Maybe I've got, you know, my information mixed up. Wouldn't be the first time. But it was my understanding that ADUs that are in the performance.
Right. This would not be a performance development.
It should be conventional.
Conventional, two lots. Can they or can they not have an ADU?
In a conventional standards, they're allowed as many bedrooms as they want in the ADUs.
With a maximum of twelve hundred square feet.
Right. And we often allow or, you know, accept homes that are often have four bedrooms in them at twelve hundred square feet. That's not unusual. So, but ADUs in the performance residential are restricted to one bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
So, the point I'm getting to is that an ADU coming in here could have as many as four or as many bedrooms as they want to be split up. So, I just want to make sure we're both in agreement on that.
I do agree with your interpretation of that, yes.
I'm confused why we don't have, you know, conditional zoning for this entire project. What is the resistance to that? Because I think it would raise a lot of our comfort level if we knew exactly what it was that's going on there. I know in some of the, at least one of the oppositions, they brought up the idea of a wedding venue being used out of that. And could you address that in your comments?
There apparently is another tract of land that is under the same ownership as one of my clients. I talked to him just before this because I was not aware of the incident or incidents, if you will, and he said that he leased it to a management company. It is a rental parcel, so they do rent it out for habitation. Apparently, they had been renting it for these events, and they have been told to cease and desist, and not only by the county, but by my client, and all future planned events, apparently, have been eliminated.
Cancelled.
Cancelled, yes, absolutely.
I see.
This was, surprised me, but it has nothing to do with this parcel.
Particular parcel. Is that your understanding as well, Rebecca? Yeah, okay. Good. And let's talk about the water issue. Both of these are on wells, correct? Both lots currently?
I believe the English's property is on a well. We're, we back up to the water system.
So is there a plan to bring the water system to these lots?
That I don't know. But if they're wells, there're no dip, there's only a well permitted per lot, and so that won't have any bearing on.
No, I think with this rezoning request, it would leave open the possibility of, in this case, four different lots, thus four different wells, going into what's clearly a problematic issue with the aquifer underneath, with the current people who are on wells in that area. So, I just wish we had had a conditional zoning so we could put some, you know, have a better, clear idea of what it is we're talking about in the future here with these. But I know that's not what's happening here. You made that clear. But in this case, it's unclear to me that the infrastructure, specifically the water, is in place to support, you know, ADUs going in or other structures. Could you address that at all, Cindy?
The other, by right, there could be four structures.
Yeah.
I don't know that there will be four structures. I know from Ms. English that they're in, she intends to keep one structure, and they have an existing well. My clients would have two lots, they could potentially have two wells if they prefer to go the well route. It's certainly their prerogative, and they're right, but they have the advantage of backing up to the water system, and I've lived out on Middle Sound Loop, and using a well is certainly not the optimum way to get your water between the odor and everything else. But, I mean, I, it's by right.
I get it.
If that's the route that they take, it wouldn't make any difference in the two wells on the two lots, whether there's one home or a home and an accessory dwelling.
I think having a requirement to tie into the existing water system would be really helpful, but.
But this isn't a development. This would otherwise be exempt from the subdivision regulations or any regulations by state statute as an exempt division of two lots.
Thanks, Cindy.
A parcel no greater than two acres and no more than three lots.
I understand. As always, you bring a good. As always, you bring a good case, and I thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's opponent's presentation. I've got four people. First is Elise Arthur. And remember, there's four, fourteen minutes between all four of you.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure I don't show my name.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Elise Arthur, and I live at one one seven Denise Drive, which is half a mile from the property on Middle Sound Loop Road that is proposed for the rezoning. I have two main concerns in regards to the requested rezoning from R twenty S to R twenty. The first is the delicate nature of the water table and water availability on the north side of Middle Sound Loop, and the precedent of straight rezoning sets without conditional use and contributes to the lack of oversight of water availability. The water table has been in steady decline since Mason Harbor and other developments. A new Hanover well digger told me last summer that the water table was down fifteen feet at the time. Last July, we awoke to low water pressure and realized in a few days that we were going to have to have a new well. It turns out, we weren't the only ones in July that had to have new wells, as we had to wait and did not have water for four more weeks. So after twelve thousand dollars and four weeks, we had water. Many folks in my neighborhood do not have the means to do this. Lots of elderly folks live in my neighborhood that have been in these homes since the fifties and early sixties. If that happens to them, they're going to have to sell their home, and we do not have access to hook up to CFPUA water. Our well is at fifty-five feet, which is above the increasing salt intrusion from Page's Creek. We're a second house off of Page's Creek. The second issue I want to address is the issue of approving a straight rezoning with no site plan. This seeming lack of transparency gives the neighborhood no choice but to speculate as to what could possibly be done if this is approved. I've had several messages from neighbors in Mason Harbor after the rezoning meeting a few weeks ago, and speculation is what happens when the community doesn't have the information needed to confirm that their homes and water supply won't be affected by the rezoning. Why not have a site plan and community meeting? I really don't understand this. Currently, neighbors are concerned about the precedent it will set, but also about the prospect of townhomes or additional event housing and parking. Several Mason Harbor residents have contacted me and are concerned that one of the requesters of the rezoning has an interest through his LLC with an event space and wedding venue that is currently operating at twenty-ten Deep Creek Run, which is right off of Mason Landing, and is less than a quarter of a mile from the property. The issue is, there's no parking at this event space, so this rezoning could allow for additional housing and parking for the event space. Currently, they're having guests park at Ogden School and shuttling them from Ogden to Mason Landing and then to the event space on Deep Creek Run. When I came by Ogden School going home Saturday evening around seven o'clock, there were over thirty cars parked, and they were also picking people up around the loop and other places to go to the event. Also, at the same time on my way home, I passed five children on bicycles, three dog walkers, and two adult cyclists on Mason Landing and Middle Sound Loop within a two-mile span of the property and slash event space. Possible venue parking and traffic across Mason Landing Road is a major safety concern without a site plan in place. We don't know that that's what they want this rezon for, but without a site plan, we can only guess and speculate and worry. So I respectfully request that this straight rezoning not be approved. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next is Robert Parr.
My name is Dr. Robert Parr, and all four of the speakers are very cool with distributing our time that goes into the rebuttal. So if some of us go over, they're going to, we'll redistribute that. So my name is Dr. Robert Parr, represent Middle Sound Lookout, and what we have before us are the R twenty S areas. Those areas were established by Citizen Action in nineteen eighty-eight. They were established to do a number of things, to protect the waters of Howe Creek, Intercoastal Waterway, and Page's Creek. They have a secondary effect of protecting the groundwater in these specific areas. And also, they reduce traffic. So this is from Benjamin Franklin. When the well is dry, we'll know the worth of water. This rezoning attempt is all pretty much localized in well, they're dependent on well water. This map over here, the purple area is supplied by CFPUA water and sewer. But you'll notice that this whole area up here, this area in particular, is one of the areas in the county that lacks in many locations, CFPU water. So that means that they're dependent on local wells. Over here, this is a close-up of the properties. These properties right here do not get CFPU water. They are dependent on wells in this area, all of these. I actually live over here, and like Rob, I misspoke. I do it sometimes, a lot of details. So I can get CFPU water, but it's going to cost me fourteen thousand dollars. So, just to move on. This area, let me see if I can clear this up. This is very, very, very important. The blue dot is the rezoning area. The rezoning will add water usage on those plots by a factor of two. And we think this is a precedent-setting issue. This goes directly against the R twenty S that was put in place to protect the groundwater. This area here is Pirate's Cove. It is on groundwater. They have a groundwater pump that failed in Florence. Over here, we have Mason Boat Landing Marina. They're on groundwater. So if we rezone these areas that presently do not get CFPU water, we're increasing the housing density. It will use more water. This is the problem. Saltwater moves into drinking water aquifers. Saltwater migrated inland to freshwater aquifers. This is from, this is from two thousand fourteen, and this is the exact area where this rezoning attempt applies. And if you look, it says the greatest increase in saltwater intrusion was in New Hanover County between Futch and Page's Creek. This is the exact same area. This is the exact same area, the greatest increase in New Hanover County. But the water table in two thousand fourteen had already dropped to twenty feet. And once again, these people are dependent on, mostly in this one area, on groundwater reserves. This over here, this is a high-density, high-flow groundwater pump that is right exactly behind these properties. This well fails at times. This over here, this is once again groundwater, it's not CFPUA, but it fails. It's failing now. You will hear reports of that. Sorry, I'm kind of, okay. This is interesting. In Florence, this is the CFPUA water line. The road on Middle Sound Loop Road was cut. So there was no CFPUA water. The two wells that I showed you, they didn't have power, and the only wells were people, individual wells, people who had power, and they were distributing water all over the place. So this is incredibly sensitive area. This is another picture. Let me clean this up a little bit for you. This is another picture. This is the water right there. That's the cut. It was cut for days. This supplies water over to the area that we're talking about. This is a sewer line. The sewer line wasn't cut, thank God. Okay, no plans. This is a straight rezoning. There are no plans. We have no idea what they're going to do. This is one of my favorite guys. If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else. Sorry, I'm kind of, okay. What is the difference between a conditional zoning, which Clark Hip recommends, and which some of you seem to be recommending, and which we all recommend? With a conditional zoning, it's a required community information meeting at the very beginning, so we can talk with the developer, we can talk with the landowners, and we can tell us, hey, we're concerned about our water quality, and oftentimes, that ends it. Matter of fact, in Middle Sound, R twenty S was established by Dr. C.W. Johnson. And Dr. Johnson tried to put townhomes in Middle Sound. And he put, right before you guys, he came up here, and he didn't know that the people objected to it. Once he found out, he was one of the founders of Middle Sound Lookout. His name is listed number one in the Middle Sound Plan, and that plan specifically leaves these areas to R twenty S. One second, I keep going the wrong place. Okay, let's talk about dimensions. Right here, R twenty also allows duplexes. You were not told that. It allows ADUs, but it also allows duplexes. You know, that's something that should have been told to you. Let's see, I keep, okay. Traffic. Okay. Life is a journey that must be traveled, no matter how bad the roads and accommodations. This is a traffic pattern in Middle Sound. There's a dead, there's a roadblock here. It's the school. Over here, if you try to get out, there's a roadblock, and here too. Down here, they're building the avenues. One point five million square feet of commercial and zoning. Okay. You saw the trip generation? Here's the important part. If you add ADUs to these two properties, the twenty-four-hour trip generation jumps from thirty-eight trips to seventy-six trips, and they all go through the school. What's the longest red light in Wilmington? It's the five-minute light. It's the longest. Everybody goes through there. This is a traffic pattern. Look closely. People come here. Look at all those buses and cars. They come here, they try to go out here, they come here, roadblock, roadblock. Here's a great one. The traffic in Middle Sound is so bad that the Smithfields has devised an alternative route to get back south. And they say, leave Smithfields and go down to the school. And then you go to the longest traffic light in the world. Well, okay, not the world. So the last thing is, New Hanover County is home to two hundred thousand people, and it's time, I appreciate your work because you guys get inundated with these requests, to reduce the goals, this is one of your planning directors, or one of your, your planning chairman actually said this, reduce our goals, take care of existing citizens over those are to come. And I think that's what everybody in this county would stand up and heartily give you a round of applause for. Thank you very much. And the two guys that are following us, they're going to take the rebuttal time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Applicants rebuttal. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you. There is no speculation here, other than two homes. Yeah, could there be a duplex? Yes, but it would still be just two homes, because a duplex would take up thirty-five thousand of the forty thousand, so it's not as though there could be two duplexes or anything like that. I guess I feel like what I'm hearing here, the first woman admitted that the wells that had failed were older wells. I mean, things change over the years, certainly. But what I'm hearing is, we have our wells, and we don't want anyone else to have wells. This is going to be two lots and two homes, no matter what, and those two homes could have as many bedrooms as they want. It's just the type of, the purpose of the ADUs that we created was for, you know, grandma, the kid from college coming home. I mean, yes, they can be used for other things, but I think as far as the conditional district, if I come back, and I can, I believe, because it would be a totally different submittal, I just didn't see the need for a single lot showing two homes and two accessory dwellings. And being hamstrung for a development, which this is not a development, to be forced to, you know, run a water line, just, I guess, like I said, this is, to a certain extent, about fairness and equity. All those other lots around this, and he pointed out where the R twenty S started, but keep in mind that we're sandwiched between lots that can have accessory dwellings and a church. It just didn't seem like that big of a jump to ask for this particular zoning change. And then, I guess, certainly, this is the prerogative of the board, but I do remember years back when Mr. White was the chair, the purpose of rebuttal is to have something to rebut, not to add additional information, because that disenfranchises me to rebut something that may be said. Thank you.
All right. I need a little help.
I think she just is suggesting that the rebuttal should be limited to...
Fifteen minutes?
No, the items that have already been presented, to bring up a new item would be, I'm just telling you what Ms. Wolf, I think, was saying, that if they were to bring up new items, that that would disadvantage her because she wouldn't have an opportunity to respond to new items that were brought up. Is that roughly what you were saying?
It was, yes, sir.
So I think she was just suggesting that it would be her preference that the further rebuttal comments stick to the topics that have already come up and not bring up a new item. That is, I believe, Ms. Wolf was trying to communicate.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the opponents rebuttal, five minutes.
Hi, my name is Peter Lepisco. I live in seven four zero two Nautica Yacht Club Drive in the Mason Harbor Development. I'm speaking as a homeowner. However, I have spoken to many of our neighbors over the last couple of weeks as we had a recent issue where our water, which is supplied by a well for about twenty-five houses, was smelling bad and was undrinkable. We are using the well, which is serviced by Carolina Water, and they had to come out to the well and treat it with chlorine to get it to the point where it was safe to use. As a result of the water being on the same aquifer as this new proposed development, my concern is that any new development will take from the water that all of us in Middle Sound Loop are currently using. I'm a former math teacher and systems engineer. So when I look at the two lots, which are now potentially split into two smaller lots, we go from two lots to four lots, and if there's a potential for ADUs being put in... in addition to that, there's a total of eight new units, all using water from the water table. And my concern is that, that that would just further deplete a resource which is already limited. So on that basis, I vote to recommend, I recommend to you guys not to approve this new project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Andrew Smith.
Yes, sir, thank you for having me here tonight. I understand Ms. Wolf's intent about rebuttal and not new information, I'll try to keep it to that. And to clarify a couple of things. One, she mentioned the comments she received were from people from a performance subdivision, that's actually not true. Three of the comments that she received, I think the only three comments may have come in, all were from lots that were there before that was done. Two, the comment that, you know, the owner's trying to put these wedding events back on Seascape is simply not true. He has a wedding planned this weekend, his name is Adam Slack, for about 200 people. He's told us before this is going to stop, it has continued. So my concern is, this right here is 1,500 feet from where he's run five weddings to date. Easter weekend, this past weekend, and again this upcoming weekend, and there are eight more events planned this summer. What I believe, and what we have been told is happening, is he is building this as rooming houses, so that way he can continue around the wedding operation and have this as off-site housing. It's a massive concern, we had fireworks going off the other night, we have people coming through the bushes to, you know, use the bathroom on our property, we have 80-plus Ubers coming out of the neighborhood on a given night. This is a pretty mundane rezoning, in my opinion, from R20S to R20. I've stood up here before, fighting and in support of rezonings. I believe in landowners' rights. But this is just way over the top, what is going on? And I fear that while this may have a different address than his wedding venue, 2010 Deep Creek Run, I think they are completely related. And the environmental concerns and all of that, I share those. But more than that, I'm concerned for our way of life. We've all spent good money to be down there, we've now got a wedding venue in the middle of our neighborhood, it's illegal, he's operating with a zoning violation, and he continues to walk through it. It's hard for him to now ask for a rezoning when he's already brazenly walking through the zoning violation that's been issued. So, intent was a word that was used throughout the presentation. I think the intent of this is to further his benefit of running a wedding venue. And it's immensely frustrating to have my 13-year-old daughter not be able to sleep, to have my neighbors' three kids, all under five, this is literally adjacent to their home, have fireworks wake them up at 10:30, to have our neighbors threatened, as happened on Saturday night. If this furthers his wedding operation, man, I don't think we can do this with a straight face. I think it's, he's put you guys in a really challenging position, I'm sorry for that. Without this, to be honest with you, I don't think I'd have a problem with the rezoning. We need the housing, I get it. But there's a clear correlation between this and him running the for-profit weddings right down the street, 1,500 feet away, that all of these people are gonna walk to. And I'm hot for it, I'm frustrated, he's told us he's gonna stop, he's not stopped. He's now ceased communicating, we're running out of avenues, but we need help. And this is only gonna further the property, it's gonna entrench this operation and take things further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If it's appropriate, maybe I'll ask our county attorney there, that if Ms. Wolf heard anything of those last two speakers, that she felt was, you know, not covered, did she be given two minutes?
She had 2:37 left.
She's got it, okay, great. Just wanna make sure that, if she chose.
Is the rebuttal done?
I'm assuming, yes. Oh.
I never indicated, or implied, that the wells that went dry were old, as Cindy said. I implied that I had old neighbors, that's different, including myself. Also, no one in our neighborhood, now, maybe in Pirate's Cove, they can have ADUs, but it's strictly R20S on Kennedy and Mason Landing and all the roads off of those. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, I think we're in favor of letting you speak further.
Thank you, and I won't belabor this, as I said, the violation took me by surprise. Certainly, I apologize if that's happening, but the county has regulations in place to remedy that, and I'm sure they will do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sir?
Is this, when you're going out Middle Sound Loop Road, is this on the left?
Yes, if you're going down towards the water.
Is it like a horse farm with a big barn in the back?
Are you talking the wedding venue?
Yes.
Is not specifically on Middle Sound Loop Road.
But that's the wedding venue we've been talking about.
No, sir.
We're not?
No. That is on Mason's.
Okay. So we've got another wedding venue out there.
Deep Creek is down further from this property, kind of off to the left, closer to the water.
Okay.
I don't know if you bring up that.
I had a question for Ryan while he was up there.
I think the one you're talking about is a wedding venue. The one they're talking about is not.
Correct.
It is, it is an air, it cannot, I mean, it is apparent, has apparently been operating as one, but in violation.
Okay.
Commissioner's Apple. Ryan, thank you. So we have two lots here, and the ability, if we were to pass this, to be, create essentially four lots. On those lots, could they put on each plot lot, a duplex on each one?
As they currently exist now, if they weren't gonna subdivide but were rezoned, yes, they could have a duplex on each. But it's important to remember that that requires a special use permit, in R20. They're not permitted by right, which is why they weren't included.
As they are now, there's two lots, and I'm talking about if there's...
Correct, and both lots are 40,000 square feet, roughly 41,000. You need 35,000 square feet in R20 for a duplex. So you could, now, with them being separate owners, if they're gonna subdivide, you lose that ability. You'll be down to a 20,000 square foot lot, 20,000 some change, you would not have enough space for a duplex.
All right, Ryan, so I just wanna make sure, you said a lot of words there, I just wanna make sure I heard you right.
Yep.
That if we subdivided those two lots, so we now have four lots, they cannot put a duplex on each one of those lots.
Correct.
Good, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I just had one question.
Yep.
What are Class III soils? Does anybody have an answer to that? It says it here, in the environmental part, which are severe limitation soils.
Correct, yes.
So I will give you the layperson explanation, and not necessarily the technical expert. So the soils in New Hanover County are classified as Type 1, Type 2, Type 3, and Type 4 soils. And for each soil type, there are different limitations in terms of drainage and the ability to install septic systems. Generally, what we consider as Class 4 soils are the ones with the most severe limitations, and potentially, you are, you're getting into limitations for some of the other classes that may require you to connect into a public sewer system, or a public water system.
Thank you, that was a very good explanation.
Okay, there's no one else, someone close to the public hearing? I was gonna say, when I, when I first got married, I lived in Kings Grant, before they got water and sewer, and when we'd get an afternoon shower, the water would drain about that deep, and then the sewer would come up. And until they ran water and sewer out there, it was always a, just a headache. I don't know if that's exactly what was going on out there. But, any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, the lack of water and sewer infrastructure out there is a major concern. I recognize that we are, density is a large part, or one of the tools in our toolbox to try and create more units, but what I'm hearing here today, I don't think we're there. One day, CFUA will have water lines and sewer lines to all these properties, and that, that may change my opinion on what is happening out there. But I don't think that the infrastructure's there, at this point, to support this, this kind of rezoning, along with the lack of a plan. It's very concerning to me, with as many of the other kind of side issues that are out there. So, straight rezoning and a lack of infrastructure, I'm not in support of this.
Commissioner's Apple, there's one thing. There is CFUA sewer there, in these vicinity.
I understand that, too.
I just wanna make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, Ryan, yeah.
They've got sewer, but they don't have water.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, they have sewer to those two lots?
Correct.
But no water?
Correct.
Well, you know, we had another situation like this, at, was right before you get to the bridge, Carolina Beach from the left.
Oh, yeah, Seabreeze.
Seabreeze, where they wanted to put four lots, on one lot, and four septic tanks, three, two septic tanks. And it just wouldn't work, I mean, if they break down, what do you do?
I can't speak to that, but to Commissioner Walker's comments earlier, what the soil classifications are, you'd be hard-pressed to find a spot with Class 3 soils to put in a septic tank. You're gonna have to be really creative. I know we're talking about conflating two different things, so...
Before, before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board's discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw the petition or proceed with the vote?
I'd like to proceed with the vote, but there is sewer. The Class 4 soils are irrelevant, as far as septic systems go, okay. I'd like to proceed, please.
But no water?
Say what?
But no water.
But no water.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to deny the proposed rezoning, while I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the R20 residential zoning district would provide uses and densities in line with the general residential place type. I find denial of the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest, because the rezoning would potentially impact the single-family residential character of the area by allowing an increase in potential density.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next one is a text amendment request, TA 25-01, request by Tammy Pitts, applicant on behalf of Wilmington Lodge 343, lawyer order to the Moose, property owner to amend Section 4.4.4, standards for specified accessory uses and structures, structures to allow RV and boat storage, and RV camping as permitted accessory uses to lodges, fraternal and social organizations with restrictions. This is a public hearing, we will hear a presentation from staff, when the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation, and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This is an applicant-led text amendment request to add RV storage and camping at fraternal and social lodges. The Moose Lodge explained that this is tied to a service that they have been providing their members for several years. However, the property is zoned R15, which does not allow RV storage and RV camping unless regulated through a special use permit. The applicant's initial proposal included camping for six sites for 14 days, and for RV storage at the lodge. In the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance, lodges are defined as follows. They are allowed in several zoning districts, both by right and by special use permit. This map notes all zoning districts that allow lodges. The yellow are residential zoning districts, where lodges require a special use permit. Red notes commercial districts where they are allowed by right. The intent of this map is to show that this amendment to the ordinance would not just affect the Moose Lodge at 4610 Carolina Beach Road, text amendments impact the entire county. This item was considered a few times by the planning board. Originally, the planning board was generally supportive of allowing some small-scale camping on the lodge sites, but the board was not comfortable with having RV storage on the site. At the April 3 meeting, the planning board reconsidered staff's revised amendment, which removed language regarding storage, and included edits that were the result of staff's conversations with the applicant. The planning board recommended the following amendment language for approval. The planning board's recommended amendment language is shown here, including regulations for the design, placement, and access for RV stored, or RV camping at a lodge. As noted by strike through, staff removed all references to RV storage in the draft language. Staff also want to call attention, this line in the alternative amendment. The planning board indicated that it wanted staff to craft language that would allow this particular accessory use through a special use permit. This standard in the alternative amendment covers that. If any lodge in an R15 wanted to add RV camping to its site, it would have to update its special use permit on file, going back through the quasi-judicial process to do so. Staff also made adjustments per discussions with the applicant, reducing the length of stay to seven days instead of 14, and allowing the RV camping at a lodge to have shower and restroom facilities that are outside of the main lodge building. This accommodates the existing site conditions of the Moose Lodge on Carolina Beach Road. Additionally, staff revised the standard for sewage dumping station with a septic tank, including the other ways that North Carolina general statutes allow septic systems to be removed. To be approved, I'm sorry. Staff's alternative amendment includes a standard that would only allow this use on sites that have direct access to a principal arterial road. This map shows the locations of those roads in the county, including Market Street, Carolina Beach Road, College Road, and US Highway 421. Because text amendments affect the whole of New Hanover County, rather than just one parcel, staff has to take into consideration how this will impact other parcels that allow the lodge use and the surrounding areas. While staff is not opposed to civic or camping uses in general, staff does have concerns about the compatibility of this combination of uses on any one site, and the potential impact to nearby areas, particularly residential uses. Though revisions reduce the likelihood that this use would be possible in highly residential areas, staff still has some reservations about allowing this type of small-scale RV campground use in residential zoning districts, given previous policy direction. As a result, staff recommends denial of this request. However, if the board decides that approval is appropr, appro, excuse me, approval is appropriate, staff has prepared the planning board's recommended amendment for the board's consideration. Following tonight's hearing, if the board approves this, it will be adopted into the UDO. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. An engineer and the WMPO are here too, for any questions that come under, up under those topics.
Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Zach, you, I know you're trying to move quick, and I appreciate that, but could you, the section where you were talking about with the amendment, that existing lodges and fraternal organizations would have to go back and update their existing, that section of your presentation, could you slow it down and go through that again, please?
Yes, sir, of course. So, this, this line right here that's outlined in blue, this specifies that any lodge that's existing, that wants to add RV camping, must go through the zoning process in order to do so. Because lodges are required to have a special use permit in residential districts, they would have to update their special use permit to do so. But if they're in a commercial district, then they would just have to go through TRC, which is the required zoning process for that district.
So they'd have to come through you, basically, if they chose this option, this amended, your amended proposal, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Wolf?
I just, I had a question. I read in the materials that there was a complaint filed. Do you know anything about that, why it was filed? Sorry to put you on this pod.
So, it came to our attention that it was, that they were operating, having RVs stay on the site overnight, and that's what led into, this is part of their coming into compliance. And this was one of the paths forward that staff worked with them on. So, as to the complaint, I don't know the exact language of the complaint, but Rebecca can maybe speak a little bit more on that.
Yes, so sometimes we get complaints from some of the adjacent property owners. That was not the case in this matter. It was more that, there were questions brought up about, hey, this area, you can go there if you want to stay in your RV campground, why is it not possible in other areas? So it came to attention, kind of through some social media posts, related to, why is it okay here, and not in other areas? And that's when staff learned, oh, wait a second, it's not necessarily okay here, after we went through our records.
Okay, thank you.
Zach, the applicant who has initiated this text amendment, they acknowledged that they weren't in compliance, and have made this effort and attempt to be in compliance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, since our discussions tail end of last summer, they have not been having any RVs on the site.
I think that that's notable, and to my mind, is different, as I discussed during the agenda review last Thursday. I think that that's notable and to my mind is different, as I discussed during the agenda review last Thursday, from a prior application that did not have the same factual pattern. There was a lack of compliance in that issue, or in that situation. And I, at a minimum, want to commend the applicant for recognizing that what they were doing was not in compliance with their ordinance and then going through the proper channel to try to correct that lack of compliance. It's important that people go through the proper process and procedure, and again, I think that that's appropriate to note. I want to hear from the applicant, but I, I do think that this is a different situation than the one that we considered about a year and a half ago.
Well, if you didn't walk behind the building, you'd never know it was right there. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I believe, um, Mr. DeBeus, Brian DeBeus?
Yes, sir.
You got 15 minutes if you got that.
I'm not going to take a whole lot of time. I think y'all are very familiar with what's going on. I'm Brian DeBeus. I reside at 4610 Split Rail Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina. Longtime New Hanover County resident, um, and past president of the Wilmington Moose Lodge. Basically, to your comment, yes. The way we have it set up there with the fencing down one side and everything behind the building, if you weren't looking with our setbacks, you'd never know it. Most other lodges in this town would not be able to do what we are, what we were doing. And one of the things is we've been doing it for 30 years plus before, you know, zoning or whatever was really a, an issue. When we have events with our, like, I'm a, an officer in the Moose Legion for the state of North Carolina. We have our Moose Legionnaires come into the area. We do have them camp, and it was just something that we afforded to our members. We were not doing this with people from outside of the area. You had to be a member, and it is something that most Moose Lodges do. So, there's over 1,600 of us in the, in the United States, so, there you go. If you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here.
I, I don't think, I don't think it was a problem about what, the problem was is you didn't go about it the right way. That's the problem. Correct?
Well, I think that they recognized, Mr. Chair, I would, I would differentiate a little bit that they were not in compliance with the ordinance, but then upon receiving information that they were not in compliance in the, with the ordinance, they ceased the activity and then endeavored to make an application to the commission to say, please allow us to do what we've been doing for 30 years. You'll note that there are no individuals that have submitted anything in opposition. It doesn't sound, from listening to our staff, that there were neighbors that were complaining about this. I personally don't find this to be objectionable, and, and again, I think that it's especially important, even if we don't end up voting for this, although I'm inclined to vote in favor of this text amendment, to note that we would prefer for individuals in our society to follow the rules or at least attempt to become in compliant, in compliance with the rules, as these folks have done.
The only thing I can see in is, the next person that comes up and wants to do that, what do we tell them?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question for Brian.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, by the way.
Good to see you, bud.
You've looked over the staff's amended proposal, correct?
Oh, yeah, we've had quite a few discussions with them. We've sat down.
Are you in support of that?
Yeah, we're ready to come into compliance with what they're saying. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Hip, do you want to say anything about this? It looks like the planning board said that y'all thought this was all right. I know it's a little out of order, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I just, I can't help myself but see those mutton chops again right up on the front.
Thank you. I'll, I'll leave that there. No, I think the, the, the planning board, uh, appreciated the applicant's efforts to come up with a solution that would allow what they do in their situation, but also, in, in a way that would allow it in other situations too, as long as they came into compliance. The applicant was very amenable. We did have to table the application to help, to help staff address some of the comments at the planning board. And even though the applicant was no longer allowing this use and, and, and obviously had an interest to get it resolved, they were very willing to allow staff to take the time to address those comments. So, I, I, the board was very appreciative and felt like that when the recommendation was made, that we were really doing, that that's how this process should work, so we were very appreciative of.
And I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Hip, but to the chairman's point about some future application, have you considered that? Can you speak to whether or not this text amendment would create complications on other sites? Again, I think this site probably not problematic. Are there other sites that we could be concerned about?
And the, the ordinance, the way it's written, required that this type of use only be allowed on parcels of five acres or more. So, there are not a lot of five-acre parcels in the county left. It had to be along an arterial road. So, you take that area of the county and, and realize there's only five acres along the arterial roads. That's even fewer parcels. Uh, they reduced, at our, at the planning board's suggestion, reduced the number of days that the RVs can be there, reduced the number of, of RVs actually on the site, took out RV storage, which is a real concern. So, in, it, it would, if this text amendment is passed, this use could be used on other properties, but it would have to meet those requirements of the text amendment.
And your personal read is that there aren't a whole lot of places where?
There aren't many, in my understanding.
Fairly purpose-built for this particular application?
I won't say purpose-built, but it certainly, if another parcel of the same ilk as the current Moose Lodge came about, the setbacks and the restrictions would limit the impact to the, to the neighboring properties.
Thank you, Mr. Hip. Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I guess that was my follow-up. The, the same line of questioning, this is specific to lodges, social and fraternal organizations, correct? This, this particular change? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that was my question too. If it got changed, what would be the side effect? And so you've answered some of the questions. I think Mr. Hip has answered some of the questions. But I guess what would be the downside? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. What would be the downside changing the whole, the whole ordinance? Potentially, in, because this is residentially zoned, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The parcel on which the Moose Lodge at 4610 Carolina Beach Road is located is zoned R-15.
Okay.
Well, there's not any houses really near it. I, I can't remember a house near it.
So there are some neighborhoods behind it to the south. Yes, sir. But the site is fairly large, and it has some pretty significant vegetative buffering already around it that has just been preserved over time.
I'm good, right? Do we have anybody to speak against it?
No. No opponents.
Let's move ahead.
Yes, I agree.
It was a mighty move.
Well, Mr. Chair, would you call the applicant up and ask them whether or not they want to?
Yes, sir. Mr. DeBeus? Before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
I'd like to proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the planning board recommended amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to add language to section 4.3.4. I find it to be consistent with the goals of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan to encourage a mix of uses and promote place-based economic development. I also find approval of the proposed amendment reasonable in the public interest because it allows lodges and social organizations to provide customary services for their members, and the proposed amendment is designed to mitigate potential impact on adjacent properties.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do a good job, Mr. DeBeus.
Thank you.
Keep that crowd happy over there.
Oh, we try.
Okay, next one is a special use permit, S-25-01, request by Caroline Assisted Living LLC. Applicant on behalf of Sylvia and Michael Lewis and Karen and Charles Cobb, property owners, for a special use permit for a senior living, assisted living facility in a R-15 residential district on approximately 10.61 acres located at 7,200 block of Plantation Road. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Before the hearing is opened, the deputy county attorney will provide an overview of the hearing procedure.
Good evening.
Evening.
When it comes to an SUP, you have four elements that must be found. You must look to see as your finding of facts and clearly state them for the record, if this project will or will not materially endanger the public health or safety and the reasons for that. If this project does or does not meet all required conditions and specifications of the UDO, because and why you believe that. If this project will or will not substantially injure, injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property and why. And this, if this project will or will not be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in the general conformity with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for New Hanover County and why. Standing is, usually you're looking at your experts. You're not looking at lay opinions unless it has a specific effect on that person's property. You can have standing if you are talking about your own property. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Nope. Okay, before the special use permit process requires a quasi-judicial hearing, any person wishing to testify must be sworn in. All persons who signed in to speak and wish to present competent and material testimony, please step forward to be sworn in. Thank you. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents. Will each be given, allowed 15 minutes for the presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This is a hearing for a special use permit request for a senior living, assisted living facility in an R-15 residential zoning district. This site is located on a service road off Military Cutoff Extension and just south of Plantation Road. The site is currently vacant. There was a special use permit for a cell phone tower approved in 2023 on the parcel directly to the north. Here are some pictures of the property taken from different angles. This site is zoned R-15 residential, with R-15 surrounding the site to the north and the east. The site is adjacent to the Hanover Reserve Plan Development, encompassing residential and commercial uses. This portion of the PD is undeveloped. Access is provided from the service road off Military Cutoff Extension. There are U-turns along the Military Cutoff Extension for those wishing to head south towards Market Street. The Hanover Reserve Plan Development is extending Murrayville Road to the Military Cutoff Extension. That project is under NCDOT review. As a note, this site is not currently served by CFPUA water or sewer. Through the county's partnership with CFPUA on the Last Frontier Project, the site is expected to have sewer service by the end of 2025. The applicant's proposed concept plan shows the 48,000 square foot assisted living facility with a courtyard amenity area and sidewalks throughout the site. There is an onsite stormwater pond and a planned CFPUA pump station. The onsite dumpster is also noted on the site plan. The applicant noted wetlands on the site. The applicant is working through the wetland permitting process with the Army Corps of Engineers for the expected impacts to those wetlands. So, senior living, assisted living facilities have some standards that are outlined in the UDO as noted here on the screen. For the WMPO, this use is estimated to generate approximately 18 AM and 23 PM peak hour trips. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as community mixed use. When the board of commissioners evaluates the request for approval during quasi-judicial hearings, they must determine that the following four conditions are met. One, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved. Two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance. Three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. And four, the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for New Hanover County. Staff has compiled the facts provided in the application and identified through staff technical review and analysis. They are organized by the applicable conclusion. These findings are preliminary and additional relevant facts may be presented during the hearing. Compiled facts may or may not support the board's conclusion. For conclusion one, the preliminary findings generally address utilities, fire protection access, environmental features, and traffic. For conclusion two, the findings address compliance with the variance ordinance requirements for assisted living facilities as outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance. This includes lot acreage, building height, utilities, and impervious surface and landscaping. For conclusion three, the findings generally address existing site conditions and land uses. Conclusion four addresses the Comprehensive Plan. This concludes staff's presentation. Representatives of the WMPO are present, along with New Hanover County engineering. The applicant has prepared a presentation as well. Yes, sir.
Are, are there any houses out there?
Not, there is a house further down on this part of Plantation Road that is off-screen, but not in this area. No, sir.
Eight house.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One. Yeah, because that's new, new territory out there. Nobody's built out there yet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they didn't make anybody mad. Anyone else? Okay. The applicant? Would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney here in Wilmington. I represent the applicant. And we appreciate the opportunity to present this proposed assisted living facility for your consideration. With me this evening are my, my client, Marcos Vidal. He is with Caroline Assisted Living. And the development team shown here is also present to, and available to help explain the project, demonstrate how we meet the special use permit criteria, and do our best to answer any questions the board may have. I know that the board is very familiar with the site. This is in very close proximity to I-140 and the interchange with the new Military Cutoff Extension. There have been very, very significant public infrastructure roadway improvements in that vicinity in the last several years. And there've also been New Hanover County and CFPUA making very significant investments for construction of public water and sewer assets in that area, and we'll touch on that in, in a few slides here. A little closer view, you can see the property's relation to the Military Cutoff Extension via the service road. And while we're close to Plantation Road, we do not access it. It's not required, and we're not proposing access to and from Plantation Road. Before getting into the plan, just briefly, I'll state what I think is a very well-known but important point, and this board probably knows it better than anybody. Our population is growing, and included in that is our senior population is growing. And with that, these types of facilities really are needed. And you can see from data that my client has compiled that we just, I took, for example, the 75-plus year the seventy-five-plus-year age projection within five miles radius or within five miles of this site over the next five years will grow roughly thirty percent. So these are the these obviously are items that the county will be facing, I guess you would say, in the next few years. The data from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services indicates that as of March two thousand and twenty-five, there are nine licensed adult care homes in New Hanover County. They're shown here with the red rectangles. The point I would note is that most of them, most of them are sort of concentrated in the middle part of the of the county. There's only two in the northern part and there's none within a two-mile radius of our proposed site. So the total existing beds in the county now is roughly eight hundred and forty-seven and we would be proposing to add eighty-nine, which I think would be a big, big benefit. The project is modeled after my client's Wakefield, Calix of Wakefield in Raleigh. So I'll introduce Marcos Vidal quickly to talk about that project and how he'd like to bring that to New Hanover County.
Good evening, Chair and Board Commissioners. Marcos Vidal with Caroline Assisted Living. Our company has been around since nineteen ninety-six. We're owner-operators of licensed assisted living. We're headquartered in Raleigh, but have had projects in multiple counties across the state. This is our newest community. We just opened it last month. This is in the northern part of the city of Raleigh and that's a real picture. This is another real picture, different view. The purpose of this is to give you the impression of what we want to do at this location in Wilmington. It is residential in nature. I know that assisted living sometimes is zoned in office industrial or what have you. We provide services to seniors that need help with the activities of daily life, so ambulance, eating, medication administration. We are not a hospital, we're not a nursing home, and we're not independent living. Independent living is usually not regulated and it's like apartments for seniors that have optional services. That's that's it. Those are some pictures.
Thank you, Marcos. Mr. Chairman, here is a color version of the site plan and this is from the staff packet and I'd like to have Brad Schuler, land planner, come up and just walk through the site plan real quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Brad Schuler. I'm a land planner with Paramount Engineering. We assisted on the design of this project to ensure that it's compliant with the zoning standards. Staff did a great job of detailing all of the zoning standards that are applicable to this project in the staff report. Overall, this this layout complies with the dimensional standards of for the zoning districts and land use, including minimum lot size, height, and setback requirements. We're also complying with the maximum impervious coverage standard, which sets a maximum of impervious coverage up to fifty percent of the site. Our project here has just twenty-six percent impervious. The project also complies with the requirement of providing a minimum of twenty percent of open space. And lastly, the project complies with the minimum parking standards in fronts along an arterial street as required by the code. So overall, we believe this layout complies with the applicable zoning regulations required at this time and we understand that if approved, we will need to submit more detailed plans for review during the T R C review process. And so I'm going to turn it back over to to Matt, but I am available at the appropriate time to answer any questions relating to the plan's zoning compliance.
I'd just like to mention one thing. If someone's not been sworn in, they can't talk.
Yes, sir, understood. I believe I believe everyone on our team's been sworn in.
We just had one just a moment ago, but that's not something that can happen.
Yes, sir. If that was on our end, I do apologize for that. Mr. Chairman, I know that the board is very familiar with the four special use permit criteria. I'll touch on these briefly. As far as whether the use will material materially endanger the public health or safety, we would respectfully contend no. The the facility would be licensed through the state and quite the opposite. It's intended to provide for the health of seniors and public health. It's very low traffic impact, eighteen trips in the morning, twenty-three P M peak hour trips, I should say, and it will provide assisted living services to seniors in the northern part of the county. Here's from the staff report. Again, low, low traffic impact for this type of use. The use, again, we would respectfully contend meets all the requirements in your U D O as Mr. Schuler outlined. These are straight from section four point three point two B four. There's eight specific ones. I won't go through all of them. We're glad to answer any questions the board may have regarding those. There is a full site plan in the commissioner's packet. I'll highlight just a few, as Brad mentioned. The impervious areas, twenty-six percent of the site. We're certainly within the maximum height of thirty-five feet and we meet actually slightly exceed the open space requirement. We exceed the parking requirement and I believe, as mentioned in the staff report, we're not in a special flood hazard area. We're not in a natural heritage area. And I do want to touch about touch quickly on the water and sewer. We provided this letter to the county staff last week. This was following the planning board meeting and I've got copies of this letter, Mr. Chairman, if I may hand these up, but it's from Gary McSmith, who's chief engineer at C F P U A. It's a letter to Mr. Vidal and it outlines the water and sewer projects that are underway in the vicinity, a number of which are under construction. So if I may hand this up. I'll briefly summarize a few parts of it. Mr. McSmith writes that both the New Hanover County and C F P U A are making investments for construction of public water and sewer assets that will enable your development to extend public water, excuse me, public sewer and water mains to serve your end to serve your development and others in the area within a reasonable time and project investment. You'll note from the letter that Mr. McSmith then goes to outline sewer first on page one, the sewer capital projects that would provide service from the Caroline site to the north, north side wastewater treatment plant. And you can tell that he's saying how this project will serve Correllian assisted living, scheduled activation date, and current status. Mr. McSmith notes at the top of page two that all sewer projects are currently on schedule for activation as shown. Conveyance and treatment sewer capacity is adequate to serve the proposed project. Mr. McSmith then explains the water capital improvement projects that would serve the project and our civil engineer, Tim Klink, scales us here if you have any specific questions about this. So in the interest of time, I will, I will move along. We are on a sufficient and properly designated principal arterial roadway under the classification map. As far as criteria number three, I think a strong argument could be made that this is a public necessity. However, we do have a licensed appraiser here to speak to property values. So I will introduce Cal Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Cal Morgan. I'm a North Carolina Certified General M A I Real Estate Appraiser. My company is J C Morgan Company. I've been appraising in our market since about two thousand and seven, started my business in two thousand and ten. So I was recently engaged by the applicant to perform research and analysis that would enable me to conclude an opinion as item three of the applicant's special use permit application. Item three states, the use will not substantially injure the value or adjoining of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. To develop an opinion for this requirement, I researched several comparable assisted living facilities in both the local market and throughout North Carolina, as well as properties that adjoin them. My analysis included reviewing the sales history and sales prices of properties that were adjacent to assisting living communities, then comparing that data to the sales history and sales prices of similar properties that were close by but not adjacent to those same assisted living facilities. Then I compared the information to determine if there was any influence on value. The assisted living communities that I reviewed, my analysis included the following. The Davis Community, which was an S U P here several years ago, Plantation Village, which was also an S U P here several years ago, the new Bryce Creek Thrive More Community in Carolina Colors and the Master Plan Development in New Bern, Cypress Glen in Greenville, Woodland Terrace and Cary, Carolina Bay at Autumn Hall, and finally, local residential properties that were adjacent to property types considered similar or even more intense than assisted living facilities. Based on the data that I reviewed, there is no indication that the proposed assisted living facility would have a negative impact on the adjoining or abutting properties. I prepared the letter, I think he's distributed it, and I have the documented support for our analysis as hard copies if anyone needs it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just have a few more slides. Thank you for your time. On criteria number four, whether the whether we're in harmony or consistent with the county's plans, again, we would respectfully contend yes. This is the comp plan. We're in the community mixed use place type and as outlined in the staff report, the intent is to provide community level services and or transitions between lower density housing and higher density development specifically along major roadway corridors. I highlighted a few excerpts from the staff report. Notably, the proposed use would provide an additional community level service to nearby residential areas at a site that may in the future act as a transition from highway highway corridor to residential parcels to the east. This is not one of your criteria, but I think it's important to note this will create jobs. We've listed some of the example job titles here. And then in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we we would contend this is a very good location for this proposed project. It is a there's a community need for this. It's low impact, it's low traffic generation, it'll create jobs, and my client intends to do a very high-quality project. With that said, I respectfully would ask that the application materials and the staff report and staff presentation be submitted into the record along with the applicant's presentation, including Mr. Morgan's report and the letter from Mr. McSmith. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nichols, the wetlands in the back, what happens to that in the future?
Yes, no, no plan for that. We have to go through the core permitting, which I understand will probably take about twelve months to go through that permitting. I don't don't know that anything could ever be done with it, but there's no, no intent to do anything with it. I'm not sure you could do anything with it. I guess in the future, if it was something that you could do, we'd be back before you asking for approval to to do that.
So to be clear, if we were to approve this today, you wouldn't be able to just up and do something on that back portion of the parcel without coming back to the commission to request some modification?
I I don't believe so because the special use permit covers the entire ten-plus acres. So if we're not showing anything there, I would defer to staff and to your, your county staff, but I at a minimum, we I believe we'd have to get the special use permit modified and my guess is that would be a major modification and so we would be back in front of the board for approval of that, but there's no, there's no present intent to do that. And I would say it's likely not to be something that could happen in the future. It's just.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Matt, in the presentation, there was noted that, I think in Zach's presentation, there's an antenna tower that will be adjacent to this. Do we know the status of that?
I I don't know the current status of that.
It's not there at this point?
I believe, based on the staff report, I thought it was existing, but I can't speak to that. I don't know.
It's not.
Okay.
Okay, does it, we don't, do we know the proximity of the tower to the proposed building?
Not by footage. Each of these lots are approximately five acres in size. Sorry, not in exact footage. Each of these lots are approximately five acres in size and so my understanding is that the antenna was roughly in the middle of the property to the north, but we haven't received any application past the special use permit for development of that site yet.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait, Matt, one other question.
Yes, sir.
Does the facility propose having a memory unit or is it just strictly assisted living? Maybe this is a question.
Yes, sir. Memory care, yes, sir.
It's currently slated for forty assisted living rooms and twenty-one memory care rooms.
I know, I know you mentioned it's a just a basic site plan that we have here. What do we do about security? It's a long way of getting to its proximity to a major highway. How do you handle?
Secure, that's a good question. Probably better for our ops team to to answer. However, I could say that we've owned and operated twenty-four communities in North Carolina and our ops team is they're professionals in managing security. It is a twenty-four-seven facility. We have staff onsite twenty-four-seven and memory care is a secure unit of the of the building. Security and management of access control is taken seriously and managed in-house.
Thank you for that. And one last question. I guess this would be you, Brad. Welcome, Brad. The I note that the entrance here comes off of what essentially is an exit ramp off of military cutoff extension. Does that, you know, raise any concerns to our traffic or driveway people?
It does not. Well, not to me. Obviously, we'll, we'll have to submit for a driveway permit through D O T. That service road is is a D O T paved road. So we will have to get a driveway permit through there. We we positioned the driveway so you gives you the best site distance when exiting. We visioned most of the the traffic, obviously, will be coming from military cutoff to enter and exit the site. So where we position the driveway, it does allow for the most, again, site distance when you're looking left trying to exit the site. And that that service road is, I believe, twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, so it's relatively.
Brad, it's noted here, you refer to it as a service road and I've been out there. It looks to me like an exit ramp. Is there a difference between an exit ramp and a service road?
I don't know the answer to that. We I called Ben Hughes when we first started working on this this project to see if that road had a name and and that is what he informed me to to call it.
A service road. Thanks, Brad.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sorry, Ben.
Are we in a different phase? Are you? I I would just want to clarify, it says there's ten point six one total acres and eight point six two acres of them are wet. Is this an accurate description?
Based on the preliminary jurisdictional determination we've received and actually surveying the wetlands, it is a total of eight point five nine acres of wetlands on the site.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, I'm going to close the hearing. There's no opposition. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just one quick thing while we got Matt here. The letter that was just handed to us from Gary McSmith over at C F P U A. The issue is the water and I see that, you know, the current status here of the eight-inch water line still needs design and permitting and the twelve-inch line that will feed the eight-inch line, they have not even begun design yet. I I see the construction people in the room here and I know they're all really, really good. I'm just hoping it all lines up. We don't have a facility. We don't have a facility that ends up not having water to it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. And I believe that Crooked Pine Water Main is a cost-recovery project, so if a perused developer, such as my client and others, would be paying toward that. But yes, sir, I think the projected timeline would be, if approved, it's about 12 months more of permitting and design, and construction would begin probably later in the summer of 2026. And then the, I think the project that you had referenced was coming online toward the end of 2026, and I believe that timeline has been accounted for.
Yeah.
So with the permitting left to accomplish with the state and the county, we won't be ready to start until 2026 anyway. And with this will-serv letter, what this letter does for us as a potential user is it gives us certainty that by December 26, I will be able to tap in.
Great.
And I know that I have 12 months left of permitting anyway. By the time we go out to bid, get ready to break ground, I'm confident, based on this letter, that I'm going to have access to water.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would say if there were questions about the wetlands, our wetland scientist, Michelle, is here. I know Commissioner Walker had a question about the wetlands, so Michelle with ECS is here to answer if you have any specific questions about the wetlands and the permit. Thank you.
Have you got any questions?
I have obviously had questions about, I mean, that's a lot of wet on those two parcels, and I know we're getting ready to start building around that area. It does just concern me, so if there's anything that she wants to add, I would love to hear it.
Michelle Meesday with ECS Southeast.
I have about 35-plus years doing wetlands permitting and wetland delineation, and we did delineation out there not that long ago, and we just heard back from the Corps not that long ago, and they approved the line that we put out there, and it's been surveyed. And yes, it is a lot of wetlands, but it needs to go through the same process as every other wetland permit. We have to go through the Corps, and the process required is that we have to do a purpose and need, we have to have a project justification, and we have to also look at alternatives, and we have to meet all that criteria for the state and the Corps to approve a permit. And it also goes to public notice for 30 days. So we'll have to address any agency comments from Fish and Wildlife Service, from Historic Preservation Office at the state, to meet all their concerns that they might have. So y'all are not concerned with getting the permits? It's an individual permit, so it's a much more rigorous process than a nationwide permit, which allows you impacts up to half an acre. Four-and-a-half acres is significant, but we're coordinating with the agencies to have a scoping meeting about it, and they wanted to know that it was going to be zoned properly before they had that meeting, and so we're waiting for that to happen, and then we're going to get together with those other agencies. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
So Mr. Nichols, are you satisfied with the staff findings?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I do have actually one more question. Matt, do you have any idea of the affordability or the cost of the units that will be there?
That I do not know. I would defer to Marcos on that component.
There'll be market rate, given the timeline to opening to the public, which could be three years from now. I wouldn't be able to give you rates at this moment, but they'd be comparable to other assisted living facilities in the market, which I just, I don't have on hand right now. I don't have those rates with me.
See, in your other projects, do you ever set aside any for affordability, a certain percentage of the units?
No, they're all private pay. Assisted living is a little different than multifamily. In multifamily, you know, their affordability component is measured as a median of area median income.
AMIM.
Yeah, and I do know that in assisted living, we don't, I don't think there's, I don't think it's translatable into our side of the industry. There's lots of services offered, and the way it breaks down is, we just can't really compare it to apartments.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just for clarity, did we close the hearing already?
Yes.
Being that the hearing is closed, the applicant has indicated that they accept staff findings and that there is no oppositional evidence that has been provided in this matter. I deem it appropriate to move, to approve the permit as the board finds this application for a special use permit meets the full required conclusions based on the findings of fact included in the staff report and additional evidence presented at the public hearing.
Second.
Go all in favor, Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm voting no. I'm going to vote no.
3-1.
Okay, next is the speaker sign-off. And our first speaker is Dave Borkowski.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the Wilmington Farmers Market at Title Creek this evening. My name is Dave Borkowski. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the executive director of the Wilmington Farmers Market at Title Creek. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that operates in the area, kind of between Hawthorne Apartments and the co-op there. I'm not sure if any of you have been there before. We meet every Saturday, 8 to 1 year-round, offering local fresh produce and meats and honeys and things from different vendors and different farmers, and it services not only the greater New Hanover community, but we also focus heavily on underprivileged folks with our double-bucks program, UVT acceptance and other things. Everything is pretty much locally sourced from around the area, and much of which is actually produced in New Hanover County. I just would like to inform you that the market is currently outgrowing its current space and is looking to move into either a physically larger location or a location where, oh, sorry, allow further market expansion. We find that we're kind of space-limited where we currently are. Demand is very high for local fresh produce, and it has brought in a lot of vendors, a lot of customers, and things of that nature. So the limitation to the physical space are currently problematic for not only customers but vendors and us being able to not only support our market and our customers, but actually able to add new vendors into the local ecosystem for that. We currently, I want to let you know, we currently have an application for capacity-building grant with the New Hanover Endowment, and specifically request money for feasibility study to explore any opportunity for options for a move, and that once that is concluded, that we do anticipate looking at properties within the greater New Hanover area to move the market to. We're looking for a stable long-term agreement for any new prospective location, whether that be a lease or something of that nature, potentially buying a property, and we plan to actually pursue future grants in order to support that. So if it meant like a lease or something like that, having grant money available to do things of that nature. And any collaboration with New Hanover County as far as the board and other things would be very, very welcome, and I just wanted to introduce myself so that if I need to come back at a future time or place, that you'd at least know who I am. So I would like to say thank you very much for your time this evening, and I appreciate you after two-plus hours letting me stand up here and say a few words. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Matt Colligan?
Good evening, and good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. First, thank you for what you did on item 14. The room felt great, and it's great to see that vision come to fruition and staff making it happen and finding those solutions. My name is Matt Colligan. I live at 180 Arlington Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina 2841, and I'm here today wearing my cap for my job, working for you with North Carolina Cooperative Extension as your area natural resource agent, and I'm just really here to back up some of the things that Dave just mentioned, talking about the Wilmington Farmers Market, and wanted to brag on that organization for a moment and just to highlight some of what makes it so unique. And one is that it's the only market around that's open 52 weeks a year, rain or shine, hot or cold. You have to be an owner-operator to be part of that market, so the people there are actually growing the things that they're selling, whereas some other markets, and I love all the markets in town, don't get me wrong, but that is not necessarily the requirement at other markets where you can buy wholesale and resell produce. So the Wilmington Farmers Market directly supports growers, and that's where I'm getting at here, is six different counties, at least, farmers from those counties are being supported by this Farmers Market, and for a city this size to not have such an amenity is something that we should strive for. So, you know, while we're having some good momentum, I just thought I'd get up here and support the work of the Wilmington Farmers Market and see if there's room in the strategic plan and our comprehensive claim review for a permanent home for a Farmers Market where, you know, the growing pains that they're experiencing, turning away vendors, is not a problem anymore. And another way to think about these farms, too, is you're not just supporting the livelihoods of these growers, but you're also creating open space that's pervious, allows stormwater to infiltrate. So any way we can support farmers to keep them doing what they do, which is feeding us nutritious food, I'd say let's keep doing that. And just thank you for your time, and realize Extension really is there supporting these growers, and we're often at the Farmers Market. We have our donation station, sometimes our plant clinics with our Extension master gardeners, but we're out there with the farmers, and we just see this community amenity that people love and are drawn towards, and we should do more to support it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Anybody?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Very briefly, I would just like to extend congratulations to Councilman Luke Waddell and his wife Amanda on the birth of their second son earlier today. I understand baby and mama are healthy and happy. Congratulations, Councilman Waddell.
And also, we've got Eric Peterson, birthdays today, right up there, the Wizard of Oz. This meeting is adjourned.[1785.66][1785.66][1785.66]